And Don, you'll let us know and we're good to go.
Yep, I'll just search around for that link. They keep moving it on us.
Okay. And while waiting for that, just to let folks know that we are still live on Facebook and recording.
Almost there.
I was gonna switch to my cat filter, but I won't.
Live on Facebook and website. And Ike is recording.
We are live.
Yep, so we're good to go. We still don't have Kristen, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to call or order the special meeting of the Saratoga Springs Public Library Board of Trustees. This special meeting will concern the budget workshop and the auditors' report.
All right, and just to let folks know that with us today, we have a couple of guests from Marvin and Company, our auditing company. We have Carol Hausman and Jen Menard, who are going to do welcome. Good to see you, who are going to give a report on the audit of the 2020 financials. So.
Hey. Hi, everybody. I'm Carol Hausman, and I'm gonna start by just going over the required communication to those charged with governance. And I'm gonna share my screen. I wanted this. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, so as part of our audit, we are required to communicate certain things with the board upon completion. So we audited the June 30, 2020 financial statements. And as part of our audit, we consider many factors in deciding the scope of our audit, the risk assessment, et cetera. So some significant audit matters. Management is responsible for the selection and use of appropriate accounting policies. And when you read the library's financial statements, included in note one, there are several pages describing the policies that the library follows. We noted no transactions into by the library during the year for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance relating to that. And all significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. As part of our audit, we do look at accounting estimates. All financial statements include some estimates. And the library does have, as a part of their financial statements, they have the employee pension liability, the, as well as an other post-employment health insurance benefit for certain employees. And those calculations are produced by actuaries. There are a lot of assumptions that go into those. And if you review the financial statements, the note disclosures go through the assumptions. What has changed related to those? But those are considered significant estimates that are included in your financial statement. Other than that, there were no changes in standards that make the financial information not comparative with the prior year. We feel that the financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. We encountered no difficulties in dealing with management, in performing and completing our audit. And we do want to say that the audit went very well. You know, I think during COVID, we can, we can say that that has changed, you know, how we do our job somewhat. It also changed how the library did their job somewhat, but it went very smoothly. The library team worked with us to get us what we needed so that we could get you a report timely. We're required to communicate to the board any corrected and uncorrected misstatements. And on the next page, we did record three entries to really record certain accrual activity in the current year. We had no disagreements with management, and a disagreement would be if we thought that management should follow a certain calculation, certain guidance, and they did not want to follow that guidance, then we would disclose that to you. We have requested that management provide a representation letter that they have disclosed to us all issues of substance to our audit. And we're not aware of the library management consulting with other independent accountants. And we have no other audit findings or issues. So that is the required communication. And then if you move to our financial statements, you'll see our audit opinion. And that is on page one of the financial statements. And you have an unmodified opinion for the current year, and that's the opinion that you'd expect. It means that based on our audit work, we believe the financial statements present fairly the information presented. Management, again, is responsible for this financial statements, and our responsibility is to audit that information. And based on that, I think it's important for the reader to understand that we get a, we walk through any significant transaction class and any significant balances with management, and look at the controls they have in place. And based on that, we establish our risk, and we decide how many transactions to test, whether we're going to do a control test and that kind of thing. As part of our audit, we don't look at 100% of the transactions. But we do look at the internal controls that are in place over anything significant, and then decide on our workload. And we believe that the audit evidence we've obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinion. And in our opinion, on the next page, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. The financial position of both the governmental activities and each major fund of the library, and the respective changes in financial position for the years then ended in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's our opinion. The financial statements are quite lengthy. We all know that. I'm just gonna go through a couple of the important things, I think, to point out. Your financial statements as part of a governmental financial statement include a management discussion and analysis. And that is a good information for anyone who wants a quick look at what happened in the current year. What were the major changes that occurred, as well as management's ideas of what's bearing into the library's future? So if you look at page eight, you'd see what Ike has put together in the team relating to the future of the library. As far as the statements go, the actual numbers, you'll see that the statement in net position, that's your balance sheet. And what this statement in net position presents is current and long term. So it's an accrual basis. It includes all the assets and liabilities of the library. And you'll see that you have significant cash unrestricted. And just as a highlight, that that cash is held by a custodian, and it's fully collateralized. So I think that's important. That's something we look at as part of our audit. All right. The other big, big numbers here are your deferred outflows, your long-term liabilities here, post-employment benefits, pension liabilities, and deferred inflows. And there are significant numbers on your financial statements. And those are why we say they're significant estimates, what the actuary puts together for those, for those items. When you look at your net position, it actually only changed by $300,000 in the current year. So you still have a very strong, strong balance sheet, considering the fact that it reflects all of your employee pension liability and OPEB liability. The next page is your statement of activities. And again, this is on an accrual basis. You had a $303,000 loss in the current year. What I want to say is, on one of the schedules, you have a revenue and expenses compared to your budget. And if you look at that, your items, your expenses and revenue are quite in line with the budget. There weren't any significant variances during the current year. The next schedule is your statement of activities. Nope, that's eight, 19. Your balance sheet governmental funds. And what that presents is, as part of governmental financial statements, this is really your short-term activity. Okay? This does not include any of your fixed assets. It doesn't include any of your significant long-term liabilities. And you can see here that your fund balance is at 4.3 million when you, for the most part, take out that pension liability and the OPEB liability. This fund balance is reconciled for all the items between the accrual basis balance sheet and this short-term look at your balance sheet. And you'll see that you also have a statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance that correspond with that short-term picture. And in the current year, you had a $700,000 excess of revenue over expenditures. So from that perspective, you had a strong year. Moving on, there's a lot of reconciliations here. And then you have your notes to the financial statements, which are very voluminous. And I'm just going to say that if you're interested in the assumptions related to the pensions and OPEB, those are included in the disclosures. And basically, there's also disclosures. Let me find that, I think. So if you look at page 31, you'll see your pension contributions. So sometimes with all the actuarial assumptions, you see big swings in your income statement relating to the actuarial assumptions and the changes related to that. But here is the actual contributions the library has had to make, the cash outflow for your pensions in the past three years. And you can see it's consistent, and it can change going forward. But it's much less than the big liability you're looking at on your balance sheet. The other thing I like to point out is the fact that the notes to the, some of the note disclosures, they required are, hey, if you, if the actuary used a different discount rate, if they felt that the discount rate should decrease by 1% or increase by 1%, you can see what happens to your liability relating to the pension. So it can have some significant swings, as the same is true for your other post-employment benefit. Here we see the sensitivity of the OPEB liability relating to the discount rate, as well as to healthcare cost trends. So I think those are really the only other real big change is the fact that we've added a contingency note to your financials relating to COVID. And the fact that, you know, it's a, we really don't know, management doesn't know this, how this is going to impact the library long term. So that's really the financial statements. And then Jen was gonna walk you through our management letter relating to the audit findings.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jen Menard. I am the most senior auditor on the job that actually comes out into the field every year. So I work closely with Carol to kind of get everything wrapped up. So every year, we, as Carol mentioned, we go through and we, we walk through the controls over the major financial areas. And our job is to determine and to look at the controls to see if they're functioning. So when we do that, if we come in, if we run across an issue, we have to evaluate that. We have to evaluate it to determine, is it a material weakness, which would be the most significant finding that we would have, or a significant deficiency. I can tell you that we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies this year, which is great. We do have some other comments that we wanted to bring to your attention as part of the audit and part of internal controls. So we have adjustments related to cash to accrual basis. So this is a repeated finding from the prior year. So as we go through the audit, the library really kind of records things more of a cash basis. So we go through and we assist management in helping to get the financial statements to an accrual basis. So this just kind of outlines the entries that we made during the audit process, or that we proposed during the audit process to management. And management has made these entries and corrected them in the library's records. And then our next finding was related to the Gasky 75. So this is your other post-employment benefit payable. And this is one of those ginormous numbers that Carol was talking about. So every year, actually every two years, I'm sorry, the library staff has to send a full census to the actuary. And that's how the actuary comes up with all of their calculations. So we check that census for accuracy of the information. And when we checked that this year, we noted that six out of the 11 employees that we had tested, the incorrect dates were sent to the actuary. So this actually related to date of hire, because there are a couple of different factors that determine when somebody is eligible for these benefits. So we did actually recommend that the library go back to the actuary with the corrected information, which they did. So the number in the report is a corrected number, but we wanted to point out that, you know, the incorrect information had originally been sent. So I think that we're good on that now, but. The next one that we have is cash dispersment approval. So we do a control test over your cash dispersments. That's a significant area for the library. So when we were reviewing this, one of the controls is that the treasurer signs off on the invoices before the invoices are paid. Nine out of 27 of our dispersments that we tested did not have the treasurer sign off on the invoice. However, the treasurer is also the person who signs the checks. So our compensating control for the missing signature on the invoices was that the treasurer did, in fact, review the information prior to signing the check. And that is why this is only an other matter rather than something more significant. Check stock security. So during our audit procedures, again, because cash is such a significant asset of the library, we look to make sure that the check stock is kept in a secure location.
Interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely.
With respect to the documenting approval on the invoice packets. So are what you're suggesting is that the treasurer then sign off on all the invoices?
Yes.
As well as the checks? Okay, I just wanted to be clear. All right.
Yes. Um, so for the check stock security, generally, that is kept in a locked cabinet. And what we noted during our audit was, when we were on site, is that there was a box of unused active check stock that was not locked up. So we just recommend that you keep all of that under locking key, and then only the appropriate people have access to that, to that cabinet. And then monthly reconciliation review. During our procedures, we noted that the monthly review of the bank's statements and the bank reconciliations is not documented. So I just want to be clear that with our conversations with management, the review is happening. It's just not being signed off on. And in our audit world, the sign off is the evidence that it's happening. So without that sign off, we do have to write up that we recommend that you sign and date when you're reviewing the bank statements and bank reconciliations. And then our last finding is payroll user access. So we noted that Ike has administrative user rights for the payroll website. We just recommend that the user rights be removed for the executive director, and that access be changed to a review or view only to ensure proper segregation of duties. This is pretty important, given that it's such a small business office. So we're really trying to have that separation in the duties.
Who is that access now, besides Ike?
Tara.
Okay.
Tara currently is the only one who had access to it.
Okay, thank you.
So those are our findings for the year. I want to, you know, echo what Carol had said, that the audit went very, very smoothly. And I cannot tell you how much we appreciate the help from your team. It was, you know, midsummer or early fall, and it was definitely, your team was great.
Yeah, thank you for helping us. So does anyone have any questions relating to the information we presented?
And I'm happy to follow up on any of the findings with you, if you have any questions about that. So Frank, your question about Eric signing off on the invoices, he does. And he has done with those. What happened with those nine out of the 27 that were tested all happened to be from the month of March, when we shut down for COVID. And so there was a variety of factors. So it was also, I think Eric's first time signing the checks. So there was a whole lot of.
That's an easy fix. I mean, it's something that is very easily correctable.
Yeah, and it has been corrected. And related to the administrative access to the payroll, part of that was a function of a couple of things. That it was when we were, after Marge retired, before Carmen came on, I was preparing the payroll journal entries, and I needed access to some of the reports there. And that access never got turned off, which was actually a good thing, because then, you know, Carmen had an extended absence. And I went back into that role again. And now that Carmen is back, it's been turned off again.
Okay.
Frank, you're muted if you're.
And the check thing, we figured out.
Yes.
So it sounds like all those things have been addressed.
They've been addressed, yeah.
Yeah, so then we're, yeah.
We're good. That's good. Good to hear.
And it is, you know, we appreciate the checks and balances.
Yes, thanks, Jen.
So I think we can sign off, Ike. Are you?
I think you're good. So thank you.
Thank you very much for fitting us in. I appreciate it. Bye now.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Blue screen of death. Okay. I guess we're gonna look at the revised election calendar next.
Right. And this is as a result of, you recall that in our last meeting, there, in the way that the law is written for trustee candidates is one of the things that we want to address. That typically it requires 25 signatures or 2% of the voters in the last election. And the number of voters that we typically have only requires the 25 signatures, because we were combined with the school district in essentially all male, I mean, all mail-in vote last year, we had 10,000 people versus a few hundred people vote in the election, which would require, rather than 25 signatures, 200 signatures for trustee candidates. I can tell you that since then, there has been legislation which was introduced in the Senate to go back to that 25 number for this year. It has progressed from the Senate to the Assembly. It hasn't gone to the Assembly for a vote yet, but my understanding is that that may be something that happens next week. If it passes through the Assembly, which seems like a likelihood, and it has to go to the governor for a signature. And it's uncertain how long that process might take. So what we're proposing here is, rather than sticking with our original April date, because it seems unlikely that it would potentially happen before we had to start doing our advertising for the vote, that we push it back pretty much as late as we can to mid, from mid-April to mid-June, with the thought that by that point, it's very likely that, you know, the outcome of that legislation will be known.
Or you're not, are you, I mean, we're not looking at doing it with the school district again, are we?
No, I don't think so. I mean, my, my thought is, and my hope is that, you know, the way the numbers are looking and the way the vaccine stuff is rolling out, that by June, we'll be able to have an in-person vote.
Which is another good reason to extend, to extend it.
That's, that's correct. And so just so you, to give you a sense of some of the milestones here, and it may be hard to read on your screen, that, that when we have the, when we schedule the vote, at least, you know, within 49 to 45 days before we begin the legal notice posting. And so if we're looking at June, the first legal notice would be sometime in April, which is when we had the original vote scheduled. Then we have to have at least four legal notice postings in advance of the, of the vote. Some other milestones that are required here is that we have to, at least 30 days before the vote, have the petitions returned. We have to draw for position on the ballot with that. Within seven to 10 days before the vote, we have to have the public hearing on the vote. And so some of these things are required milestones, and some are just internal instructions, like when we have to have the legal notice prepared in order to send it to, to our papers of record. like when we have to have the legal notice prepared in order to send it to to our papers of record.
Ike, how many board positions are open?
So right now, there would be two. One would be for Kristen's position. She was appointed. So that means that that position becomes vacant at the next election cycle. And then I believe it's Janet, right? Janet, your position is. It's oh, it's Frank's. So it's Frank's.
No, Janet Janet's there for a while.
Okay. Oh, no, because Janet was just Janet.
Oh, I only have another year, I think. Come on, Frank.
Is that true?
Yeah, Frank is 2021, Janet's 2022.
Okay.
2023, I'm 2024. Heather and Terry will be 2025.
Right, right.
And I only know this because I went and looked it up.
Okay.
And Frank has to run because he's president.
We're assuming, right, that you're running again?
I, you know, I haven't really thought about it.
It depends on whether.
Probably, I probably will, yes.
Does it depend on whether he has to get 200 signatures or 20 signatures?
That may factor into it. Know that many people.
All right. So if we if we want to reschedule this vote, I think we need to take an action to to reschedule the vote from April to June.
Okay. Do we do we have a motion to accept this revised library election calendar?
So I move that we accept this revised calendar.
I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? The motion carries. Okay, we have the proposed budget.
Right. And this is this is preliminary. So whether we want to take action tonight or not, or maybe defer it till our next meeting, we have just bought ourselves a little bit of time by by rescheduling the vote. But I wanted to give you a notion of what we were looking at internally about where where we think things might be going and tell you where we think things might be changing, you know, growing and what we think we might be cutting back at. So at a the very basic level, I wanted to make sure that you're aware that we're looking at a zero growth budget. So no change in in the tax receipts, which technically means that we don't actually have to have a vote on the budget because the the proposition that was on the last was that we collect this amount until there's a change, which is which is typical, what we typically do, particularly when we have the vote in the library, is that whether the vote is required or is not required, we put it on the ballot anyway so that the voters can have their say along with the along with their votes for the trustees. So that's the that's the the bottom line is that we're looking at no change in taxes. How we get there is that so so just I'll go through some of the highlights here is that you know that this year we have moved some funds. We've reallocated funds from physical materials, from books, movies, music into electronic resources, simply because, you know, more the the use of electronic resources is growing. Access to the building has been limited. You know, it use of physical materials has has declined since we are uncertain about what the future looks like for the next several months. We feel like that's going to continue. And so we've left those changes, those reallocations in the budget. So so for we're looking at less money for physical books, less money for physical magazines and microfilm potentially, and less money for DVDs and CDs and and put those funds into the electronic resources, which is eBooks, e-audiobooks, and expanding our access to to e-magazines and some other databases. So that's that's one thing collection wise that we're looking at. The other, are there questions about that?
It seems wise.
The other thing that we're looking at, the kind of the the big number thing is that for salaries, we're looking at no pay increases for anybody for the year since we seem like it seems to us like in this current climate, you know, with with so many people struggling that that pay increases might be a difficult sell and it might be. And and I think staff internally are okay with the notion that of maintaining where we are now without any increase there. We are underspent for what we budgeted this year because we did anticipate filling some positions, Assistant Director and Department Head for Youth Services. Held off on doing that simply because of the of the situation that we're in with reduced hours and and, you know, and delivering our the uncertainty about the way we deliver our services and being in the midst of this strategic planning process. But what we have done for next year is we've left that money in the budget with the hope that we can go forward with, if not all of those those changes, filling some of them, particularly perhaps the Assistant Director and the Head of Youth Services.
So that.
And that, right, so that's that's budgeted. And some other things that you might want to take note of. You know, printing costs are down, mailing costs are down because, you know, we used to print, you know, massive numbers of quarterly program brochures. We haven't done that this year because of the uncertainty. And going forward, we'll probably be relying more on our email newsletter than printed brochures because the the mailing of those was to organizations rather than to individuals to organizations to help us disperse them. And they primarily promoted in-person programs, which it seems like it's going to be a while before we're going to be able to do that. There is a an increase there in electricity. I think we've talked about that before. We're coming to the end of a current contract and Rick is anticipating a pretty significant increase in electricity. And with the heat, you know, originally, when I was putting this together, we anticipated, you know, natural gas prices were declining. So we reduced that a little bit. It's hard to say now what that might look like in the future when the polar vortex makes it all the way to the Mexican border and disrupts supply. It's it's hard to know. But it it does seem like we might be able to take a little bit of a decrease there in order to have increases of other places. There is also a little bit of money in or not a little bit, but there's some money in capital projects. We don't have any particular capital project on the docket for next year. We do have a project this year that has that may be deferred depending on, you know, whether we can get the 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 invitations to bid out and what the what the bids look like coming back, if anybody's even responsive at this point, because it it does seem like it's very hard to get contractors these days.
Which project?
So this year, we're looking at the the last of our HVAC updates, which is replacing the 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 heat return units and energy return units. It's just it's the last vestige of of this multi-year HVAC project. It hasn't gone out to bid yet. The timing of it is, you know, it's something that requires that we, you know, we want to do it in a shoulder season when we don't need heat and we don't need AC and, you know, in order to turn those things off to address these things. It's it's like I say, it's hard to know what kind of response we're going to get and whether it's it will be within, if we'll get any response to our invitation to bid and if it will be within what we had originally budgeted. Because the those prices are climbing. For next year, what we have potentially is a major elevator project. As you know, our elevator multiple times this year has been out of order. It's currently out of order, has been for a couple of months. And the big issue there seems to be that the electronic components are no longer available. It's a 25-year-old elevator and every time it goes out of service, the the company, it's an Otis elevator, essentially has to go, it seems like to the Otis elevator junkyard and find the find the replacement parts that are compatible with the elevator that we have. So it would be a pretty major modernization or perhaps a replacement. We don't have hard figures about that yet, but it's it's definitely in the six figures.
But so the elevator right now is just in repairs and maintenance, taking up some of that money.
Correct, correct. But it it would potentially be a capital project for next year.
Okay, I had a couple of questions about the estimated non-tax income.
Yes.
On the next page. First of all, for the for the cash on hand, I know the auditor just mentioned significant cash balance. So I assume the cash on hand is simply a portion of that balance of that cash reserve that's fed into this budget?
That's correct.
And is it is that feeding in done by any sort of standard calculation? I mean, is there a particular percentage that you like to take out or or how is how is that figured?
It is, you know, it's kind it's sort of the last thing that we add in. You know, we figure out what we want to spend, you know, what we need to spend in order to do what we need to do to serve the public and then figure out what, you know, what are other sources of income might be? And then whatever is left over, that's where we go to the to the reserve, to the cash on hand.
And for the grants, for the grants and aid, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
For the grants and aid, do you have, are these are the grants part of that standard repeat grants? Or are there new grants that you have in view or?
It is, that is really just totally an estimate. We never know. I mean, we can apply for grants and we never know if they're going to, if we're going to get them. We do know that part of that is around $12,000 in aid that's passed through sales annually. That's the, you know, and that's kind of the sum total of the state support for library operations. And then the rest is is it's really a potentiality. You know, we we go looking for grants. For example, this year, I think we put about that much money in the budget for grants this year and far surpassed it when we got one of the state library construction grants for this project that I mentioned, the the HVAC. So it's it's really just an estimate.
Thank you. And my my last question is the retiree health CONT period. What is CONT period?
It's contribution. So it hasn't always been the case, but it in recent years, we've we've changed some of our policies. So retirees in the last few years are contributing toward their health insurance in retirement at the rate they were contributing when they were employed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so what I'm thinking probably at this point is that we'll go back. Eric and I haven't had a really a chance to talk about this. You know, if we've talked about it internally with with our leadership team here, but I'm not, I don't believe that we're ready to take action on it. But I just wanted to give you a sense of of you know, what we're thinking here and see if you had any questions. And we'll, I think, likely come back with a finalized version perhaps at the at the March meeting or maybe more likely the April meeting.
That's. Does anybody have any more questions about this?
Katie does. No, I think you're muted, Katie. Oh, it says you're not muted, so.
Now.
Now you're good.
The rental income, did you is is that the, at this point, just the cell service and the friends? Did you leave off the piece from the cafe in the past?
Yes, so it doesn't include anything from the cafe. And at this point, it doesn't even really include anything from the friends. But I can tell you that at a recent meeting of the Friends Board, with the the, there was a discussion about their rent and they were looking for like some kind of guidance about when they should restart paying. And, you know, and I just gave them their fiscal year ends April 30th. And I said, so if you if they needed some information for planning for budgeting, why don't we look at May 1st for them to resume? And then hopefully by that point, the shop is open. You know, maybe by that point, we'll be open a little bit more and they'll be generating a little bit more income. But just to give them, you know, some kind of place to begin their planning.
Yeah. That makes sense. And I knew that because the cafe was closed, I assumed it wasn't in that number, but I just didn't know.
Yeah, that's correct. That's correct.
Anybody else? All right. All right, so you're going to work, talk to Eric about it and and get back to us.
I will. And I'll double check with Rick about the utilities. I didn't have a chance to do that because he's been out for a bit, so.
If there's if there's nothing else, I think we can adjourn. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.